Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, it is Monday, November 18th. That's 6:10 PM. We are in the Rutland Free Public Library in the lower room. This meeting, as usual, is being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and on YouTube. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You could indulge me just for a second. I just wanted to say, I don't know if anybody had a chance to watch any of the services today that were on Nessen for Lieutenant Menard from the Worcester Fire Department. We had eight of our staff yesterday at the wake, excuse me, nine yesterday at the wake and eight today at the funeral.
I was there too.
Yeah. We also actually supported the Worcester Department the night of the fire because our ambulance happened to be at UMass when the calls started coming in. If we could have a moment of silence for Lieutenant Menard. Thank you very much. So important with the support that our first responders have been getting, so thank you. We are, as what seems like our usual, going to jump a little bit out of order. Our town administrator, who has been in class all day, is stuck in traffic, so we have some things we're going to wait on. That will probably include the public information session that's scheduled to start in four minutes. We might start a little bit late on that. So let's get as much done as we can. In the meantime, could I get a motion to sign Treasury warrant 11 and payroll?
Motion to sign Treasury warrant payroll.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't believe we have any minutes tonight. Oh yeah, we do, we have 10:24. I'm going to get a chance to read those.
Those were the joint minutes for the joint meeting that we did for the warrant review.
Motion to approve meeting minutes is written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Again, we're waiting for the town administrator to come, so we're going to jump right down, wait on the public information session. Is there anyone here for public comment that does not have to do with the information session which we'll hold on? No? Yes? Dick?
Of course.
Of course.
This goes back to Dick Williams over there.
Thank you.
A long time ago, Harry Johnson was building inspector, Central Tree School was built, and I used to say, "What is all that noise always coming from the school down there?" And he said, "It's an air compressor." I said, "What the heck do they need an air compressor running for?" He says, "In order to keep the sprinkler system from going off." I had a gentleman, Mr. Putnam, say, "Dick, I remember a long time ago you saying that to me." He says, "I went by there the other day and I still hear it. For some reason or other, can you sometime, I don't know who it would be that you would contact, but doesn't Joe go around to check these buildings, you know, for maintenance-wise, if these people are keeping up to date on something like that? Or do you know anybody down there that maybe I can find out from? What the heck is..."
Which building you talking about?
Central Tree. The school.
Sheila, my understanding was that the DPW superintendent does go around annually to inspect the buildings. It could just be one of those things that if it's not actively happening right there, I don't know. I don't know if Steph knows anything to put him on the spot.
Could you repeat the description if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
A long time ago, Harry Johnson, I had asked him about a noise down Central Tree nor, um, school.
Yeah.
And he said it was an air compressor to keep pressure on the sprinkler system in order to where it won't go off.
Correct.
It's still going. All these years, the air compressor is still running to keep the pressure on that thing. Is that normal?
Does it run 24 hours a day or does it just kick on?
Well, I had a friend of mine said that he was down there and heard it going. I'm saying, "What the heck is it still going for?"
It means there's an air leak in the system. But I'll check on it tomorrow.
If you would, please.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is something that Harry heard way back then.
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Could you just tell us where was it being heard? Where were we?
Well, he was at a soccer meeting and he was leaving to go back to his car, and that's when he heard it. So it's in the back corner.
Back corner.
Of the school.
Outside.
Outside?
He heard it from outside. Usually the intake is on the outside, so he would have heard it.
And when you say back corner, closest to the soccer field or closer to the basketball court?
Soccer field.
Soccer field.
That's what I was told, so.
Huh.
And it was a long time ago.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, we're down the list.
One of the things I wanted to, I was hoping Joe would be around DPW. He's never here and I would like to see him in here once in a while.
All right.
But Crack Seal, I had asked quite some time ago if he was going to crack seal 68 because I hate seeing roads fall apart. It was a long time ago. I asked Gary to do the same thing on Wachusett Street and never happened, you know, the conditions are there. So I'll just sometime if I see him, but you know, I would definitely think that's something that you people should be asking also. And then my last thing is, I'd like to really thank him and his crew for doing a good job out here at the parking lot and out back. He's got almost everything down except the tree that's still out there, but it's at least looking very nice and I'm very pleased to see the work that he's done and I want to thank him for that. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, he probably doesn't want any of us to say this, but I believe his goal is to have it done in time for the Festival of Trees festivities here at the library.
Good.
His goal, to not open yet. Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, moving on, there's nothing under old business, we'll move to new business, and we have under 040, Managed Growth Steering Committee update.
Yes. So I just wanted to bring an update to the board that we did have our last meeting of Managed Growth Steering Committee, November 6th. We wanted to meet prior to the special town meeting. We reviewed the three proposed articles that were going before the town. Our town planner discussed the housing trust plan. We'd like to revisit that in the spring. That was held back. It was held back from the warrant. Dick Williams has gone to check with the Conservation Commission Chair on where they are with the possible wetland protection bylaw. And we plan to re-meet after the holidays. Just a quick briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Do we have a charge for that committee?
Not that I know of.
Are we not supposed to set a charge for that committee? That is a newer committee that was established.
My understanding is there was a charge, but in having passed Managed Growth in May, the charge needed to be revisited. And I believe Mike was drafting something.
Okay, so that's something we definitely want to revisit.
Put that on our task list here. Got it.
Excellent. I apologize. So next under new business is 056, the public shade tree hearing update. We do have a document in front of us to review. I'm going to wait a few more minutes to see if Mike comes in so that he can review with us what we're looking at here. I'm going to jump to 076, 61. We have a 61A application for Turkey Hill Road. And you have in your packet the procedure that we follow. According to Laura earlier today, the only town agency that we are still waiting for is AgCom to come back with their response. They have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. In any other case, we have received notice from the Land Conservancy, RDIC, you have this packet in your new business, DPW Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the last one is, no, two from the Conservation Commission. And so we could review this tonight or we can wait until we get our AgCom response, which is the last one we're waiting for, and it will go for action on the next meeting.
I would like, if we have the time, which I think we do, to wait for AgCom so we have official responses from all the boards and commissions and agencies.
Okay, great. So then this was just a...
We're not pressured for time, right?
We are not.
Okay.
No, we're well within it, actually.
Okay.
So I'm part of, I'm the daughter of...
Hi.
...the seller.
Name and address.
Elizabeth Hussey.
Thank you.
97 Turkey Hill Road.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, this will come back up in a week. And if everything goes through, we have a potential closing date of the 25th, which is next week.
So is it two weeks this point in time?
It'll be two weeks.
Yeah, it's typically two weeks.
So the AgCom, we're meeting...
Tomorrow night.
...in the middle of the...
Yeah.
So actually, the 25th is Monday, isn't it?
So just to clarify, I assume you were given our Chapter 61A procedure and the MGL that goes along with it. The town has about 120 days, does have 120 days to take action, but then can act more quickly if there's generally, you know, no interest. So we've gotten very good responses this time from pretty much every agency. We've got one more meeting tomorrow night. Are you trying to actually close next week on this property? Because I don't think we had a completed 61A application up until two weeks ago.
That's what we would like you to do.
Okay. So we received this initially on October 31st in hand.
We've been working on this for a while.
Okay, had some completions and things like that. I know it came in and was finally complete a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yeah. I'm not the only one involved in it, but we thought that, we were told that you had everything and there was one other thing you needed and...
Yep, still one more thing we need. Okay.
Do we need, do we need to hear from, is that a requirement?
It's been a policy. You know, we could make a leap of faith and say, with the understanding that none of the other agencies that we've requested information on have expressed interest in the property. You could, we could take action tonight based on an assumption and say, well, but that's a tough one because obviously knowing that they now want to close, you'd hate to set up a situation where in the future, if the town had interest in the property, it'd take it an inappropriate action.
Realistically, if they've completed all the steps, there's no financial reason to believe that AgCom even has the ability to have an interest in the property. Am I correct?
So the town, the last time we took 61A to any lengths, it was to hand over our right of first refusal to a nonprofit. So it's possible that the AgCom could come forward with something like that. But you're right, in terms of their own financial availability right now, we know that they don't have many funds available unless a private person came forward.
Yeah, it's tough if you want to close next week. I mean, realistically, the cost of carrying this forward could be thousands of dollars, you know, if we delay it. I just feel like we'd be impacting somebody who's already done their due diligence. That would be my only concern.
AgCom has an interest.
Why wouldn't they have an interest in like a single family, like a one house lot?
I'm sorry, what?
Why would they have an interest in it?
It's actually more of a process for us because when the 61As come up, we need to just sort of make sure we do everything the same each time so that when the town does express interest, it knows what its legal availability is within the 61A. We've had, you know, the last time too, because when that 120 days starts ticking, for any community that is interested in actually doing a purchase on a 61A, it's a short timeframe to get everything done. Yes, Mr. Williams?
On the Concom, I'm almost positive we brought it up and they were supposed to write the letter and send it back to you people.
Yep, we did. We have Concom?
Not Concom, excuse me.
AgCom.
The Ag Committee. Anyways, I just texted Randy to make sure, I'm pretty sure we voted on it, that we did not have any interest.
There you go.
But I wanted to make sure.
So we heard from the current clerk of AgCom who said that they have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, but didn't comment on whether or not they had already discussed it. Tomorrow night meeting Tuesday, 19th.
Well, I know, we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Well, we'll wait and see if Randy gets back to me.
So they're going to discuss it again? If they already have an opinion?
Well, another point too is the fact that it's going to be properly written up and then signed at the meeting and then sent to you people.
A letter of no interest?
Of no interest.
Okay, so in terms of actions tonight, what we could do is vote to waive the town's right of first refusal to take option to purchase the property. I think it would be hard at this point to do that sort of with a condition on it, just because that's a big, that's a big vote to take, to say conditional upon tomorrow's vote. We could just do it straight on and essentially, you know, advise AgCom that for future reference, we might need their response a little bit more quickly. So just to catch you up, we have somebody here who's representing the 61A property in the back left and has indicated that they might have a closing date for next week. However, we have not heard from AgCom.
Yeah, okay.
So...
But we have Mr. Williams who is on AgCom, right? And has, is quite a reference on the position of the AgCom is that they hold no interest also.
I mean, what, I guess my question is, what is our actual requirement in terms of what's needed?
As far as the policy goes?
As far as MGL.
Here, oh, MGL gives us the 120 days and legal review has always stated that if a town is not expressing interest, there's not really a good legal reason to hold up up until the 120 days, although you technically can.
So it's our internal processes that we have written that we require all boards and commissions that have a vested interest in...
Correct.
Confirming that.
And I think historically, just, my understanding historically is this has been, 61A properties have been a bit of a contention in the sense of some boards and commissions feel as though they're not notified with adequate time to make a decision that it doesn't get to them until it's very much closer to the 120-day deadline.
Yeah.
So I think that, yeah, it's just, we let the, pretty much as soon as we got the note in about it, we made sure that it was passed along to the other boards and commissions, but it's been less than a month that we've had it.
Right. I would say the Agricultural Commission unfortunately is probably the town organization that has felt most, I think, left out is a little strong, but they've felt at times that they weren't receiving some of the documentation.
So Dick, you're fairly confident?
I am. And I noticed that just right here, Laura had sent a letter to the clerk about it.
Yeah. This is a tough one.
Yeah, we'll find out.
I mean, realistically, if we don't act, we could jeopardize the sale. It would incur additional expenses. It just seems like we'd be punishing somebody. I know it's within our right and our ability, but a lot of these processes are hard to understand and hard to navigate. And I would just hate to see the sale fall through because of our inability to act.
I, yeah.
Would it be reasonable just to step it back for a second call until we can confirm with Randy? I think if the chair were to say that it's definitely no...
I think Glenn's chair now...
I think, yeah, Glenn Coppola.
I'm sorry. Could you call him? Get a confirmation that that's the position?
Hmm.
Or is there more significant discussion that you guys are going to have in your meeting tomorrow night that might change people's minds?
Something like that.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Is there some way you could make it, you know, and once we do vote, get the letter over to you and then by Wednesday you could contact the person saying you're all set? That way?
You know, it's technically on the table. It's just that this is a slippery slope because if we ever get to a point, future, different board, different people, and it's a contentious 61A and it's competitive, you wouldn't ever want the town to be in a position where it turns and, you know, somebody turns and says, "Well, a previous board, you know, let this process be a little bit more flexible. Why wouldn't you do that for us?" And, you know, really kind of turn the screws and put the pressure on. It's a tough call.
I think that's a little bit of the pressure now, also having not heard from delaying the vote or taking the vote pending AgCom's okay with it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is similar to me as just skipping AgCom's input altogether.
I know. This is a tough one. So the other option that I'm thinking no one is going to like to hear, but I'll say it anyway, is we just schedule a quick special meeting for it once we hear. Yeah, I know. A lot of meetings. I know. That's why I said nobody would like it.
Not that I don't want to, I just, I have meetings every night but Fridays.
Yeah.
But you don't like the idea of a contingent vote?
You know...
It also puts pressure on Ag. If Ag wanted to have a more detailed conversation, which I guess is their right to do.
Right.
Then what are the rules? We'll do the right thing, we'll go by the rules. The rules say that we have to give...
The rules say that we have the flexibility here to take our time.
Yeah, but what's the right thing to do?
It's just, we try to, you know, you try to be mindful of what the needs are when the town is really probably, in all likelihood, not looking to make this purchase and take our right of first purchase.
But we don't have a confirmation of the closing. This is Hussey said likely will be closing, but...
That's when we have a potential date.
Potential date.
But if we have to, we'll push it further out.
There you go.
So I...
Another week.
Yeah, so I think you are looking at first week of December. So our next regular meeting is the second. And that's when this would be on with a complete package. We would vote and you're free to do it, one would assume, depending, you know, assuming the vote goes forward to release the 61A. At that point, you'd be within your rights to close at any time.
That hurts the buyer.
That's a big assumption.
In terms of deferred interest closing at the beginning of the month. It's just...
Like I say, we could do, yeah, it's the only one we're waiting for. Next week is Thanksgiving week.
Well, next week is when they're hoping to close, or the first half of next week.
Yeah, right. We'd have to probably meet Thursday.
Just a double.
All right, so there's, just to keep this moving forward, so there's hesitation to take shortcuts with the process, which I can appreciate. There's hesitation to possibly cause the buyer and seller to have undue pressure. So then the pressure's on us. If we can briefly meet and have a quorum somewhere as soon as AgCom meets after tomorrow night, we can post for as early as Thursday or Friday or, all right, technically we could post for Saturday. Those are our options. Anyone?
I personally, I don't like the idea of another meeting, but I would feel better following the process and posting. If we're trying to get it in before their, the potential closing date of the 25th, I'd feel more comfortable allowing AgCom their process and then coming with a special.
Process is important.
For something like this, I mean, in general, process is important, but...
So let's talk availability. If Thursday is our first option because of posting requirements, you're looking at Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
I can't make it on Thursday.
Okay. It's an odd and unusual time, but does anybody want to consider a Friday very early morning before people leave the town?
I was going to say, I could do Friday morning, early-ish.
Like early, early.
Yeah, I don't know what time early is.
What are we trying for?
So we have an incomplete 61A. The seller has a potential closing date right before Thanksgiving. We are only waiting for AgCom, they're meeting tomorrow. So we're trying to make some concessions for the buyer and seller, but keep the process.
I can't do Friday, but...
We really just need a quorum.
Saturday, you got your cake thing going on there.
What?
Saturday's the cake auction.
Yeah.
Morning time would be all right with me.
Well, what's your time Friday morning?
I'm flexible Friday morning.
Friday morning? How early would it have to be to be okay?
Oh, man.
Yeah, I know.
Work, Sheila, work.
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
Uh, what is, what is early?
Seven. I mean, you know, RDIC has met as early as 6:00 AM. We really just need to post it and make sure we cover all of our bases and get there with a quorum.
Yeah, so I guess seven Friday morning would work.
Seven? Seven?
I'm out.
You're out? How do you, seven?
Friday, seven.
Friday, 7:00 AM. So I think you'd be okay. I mean, we're obviously jumping to some conclusions even having this conversation, but that's what you're looking at. So we'll post, we'll probably get posted tomorrow. It'll be a 7:00 AM super quick meeting and then someone from our office will be in contact. And you'll have a portion of your answer after tomorrow night, after the Agricultural Commission meets and takes a vote on their part in the first refusal. Does that make sense?
So we should contact somebody on Wednesday to find out what happened.
At AgCom? Yes. Yes.
And then on Friday during the day, we could get the...
Yep.
...documentation.
Correct.
From the town office.
Right, so what?
Someone give her a call, get her information?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, we'll figure it out for free.
Town Administrator, he can...
Yeah, I can do that for you.
Right. So the action, again hypothetically, the action that the board would be taking and the one thing that will be on our agenda for 7:00 AM on Friday is to vote to release our right of first purchase on the property. All right? All right, thank you. Okay.
And I don't, if, sorry, can I just, I don't think, I don't know if it's officially been said, but none of the other boards and commissions that we've heard back from have interest in the property, so it's just getting the feedback from AgCom and then the discussion here, so...
But they are a significant board.
Right, they, yes, they are, but...
And if you would like any of the copies of the documents we have in front of us tonight, just to have, you're welcome to them. We've got our procedure, we've got the copies of the letters from the various commissions and committees, and we have a copy of your application as well. You're welcome to them. You don't have to, no pressure. All right, I'm going to keep going under new business, just get that out of the way, and then we're going to circle back now that Mike is here to the public information session. So...
Laura has it, I think.
077, we have an assessing contract renewal document that's in your new business file. So we have been extending our assessors' contracts sort of incrementally. We're on to another increment.
Yes, this reflects how the clerk's position was taken out of the RRG assessment and is now on the town side, and that's the regional position we created with Hubbardston. So this is the reflection of that. The motion for this would be for the chair and myself to sign.
Okay. So just for clarification, this is just the contract coming out of the RRG. It hasn't changed staffing-wise. It's still the same agreement with Hubbardston and everything. It's just...
Yeah, it's the extension to June 30th, 2020, which is the final extension that's allowed in our contract with RRG and reflects a difference in the assessment now that we're paying for the clerk and not paying them for the clerk.
So you want a motion for the chair to sign on behalf?
And Mike. And the town administrator.
Make a motion that we allow the chair, the board, and town administrator to sign on town behalf, extension of contract agreement, extension with the Regional Resource Group.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to public shade tree procedure. This is 056. You have memo in front of you and I think Joe Buckley just came in. You have a memo in front of you, and I think Joe Buckley just came in. Welcome, Joe Buckley. Okay.
Hi, Joe.
Um, could I just get a show of hands? We had three, uh, three different addresses who were, um, in consideration for shade tree hearings. Is, how many people are here for the shade trees? One. That's it? Okay.
Can you share one address?
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we had, Mike, did you want to go through this, or do you want me to do it?
Sure. Um, so, Joe and I conducted the shade tree hearing last Thursday per the provisions of state law, um, at the DPW. Um, we met with the applicants to hear what they, um, had to say and why they'd like the trees cut and/or removed. And so, Joe and I are presenting the, um, report from that hearing to the board because the applicants cannot, um, alter or remove their trees without permission from the town per the shade tree law. Um, so the first one was on Prospect Street, uh, who, uh, the applicant's looking to have a tree removed that was damaged during the ice storm of two thousand eight. She had an outside company look at the tree, and the company told her that the tree has base rot. Um, the applicant is just looking to remove the tree for her own peace of mind and is looking to have the, uh, tree cut on her own accord by hiring a business to do it. But again, she needs the town's permission to be able to do that on her property. Because it, the tree, um, per the statute in state law, any tree that falls within X number of feet of the public right-of-way is considered a public tree and under the town's care and control.
And so, the hearing... Did what? What did you end up with at the hearing?
So, uh, the hearing is where, uh, oh, sure.
Thanks.
No one else came to the hearing except the proponents. So, we didn't hear any, um, dissenting factors. But I just want to make sure that that's clear. The only people who came were the people who wanted to take the trees down. We didn't hear any, from any other side.
Right.
And it was posted per the requirement. So, we had to put it in a newspaper two weeks before, and then again, one week before on the website, um, and then send a notice to the proponents as well.
Okay.
So, do you want to take the trees one at a time, or do the whole?
Yeah, we'll do that because, yeah.
May I, I ask, may I ask, Joe?
Yeah.
Has DPW looked at the trees?
We looked at all the trees.
Okay.
What do you want us to do on the Prospect one?
I was gonna say for the Prospect Road, or Prospect Street one, do you see, do you think it has base rot? I mean, that's hard to evaluate, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an arborist by trade.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we looked at the tree to see if it was dangerous. It, it wasn't dangerous, but the folks who live there said they had gone through quite a bit during the ice storm and were just genuinely uncomfortable with the appearance of the tree.
What do you want to do? Is DPW, or is the DPW responsible?
Right, so in the, in the absence of a dissenting opinion, to your point with the tree hearings, which typically the only people who come to the tree hearings are the people who have personal interest, um, what is the town's position? Meaning, having held the tree hearing as the tree warden, do you have a position on this tree?
Uh, I think the tree should come down.
There you go.
So, we just, when we vote, to just allow her to remove the tree?
Yeah.
Any cost to the town?
No.
Now, she said that she would pay for that on her own accord, just to get her own peace of mind. Fair enough.
And that one, um, is actually just on the line of town property. Um, and it's close to the limits of what it could be considered a shade tree.
Close enough. It's pretty much the line runs halfway through the tree.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to allow, uh, the residents of twenty-nine Prospect Street to remove the shade tree.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next one?
Uh, the next trees, the next set of trees are located at four Central Tree Road. Um, the applicants have stated that, um, the trees from their acorns have caused nearly twenty-five thousand dollars in damages to their vehicles due to, um, dents that the acorns have put, uh, on them. They're looking to have the trees removed to alleviate the financial burden. Um, and in their opinion, um, the trees are impeding on their use or enjoyment of their property and driveway. They've noted that trees, uh, branches from the tree that have fallen in the past have gone as far as a foot into the ground. So, they've proved, the applicant believes them to be hazardous. Um, the applicant has stated that the tree, uh, also has some trees in the back of their property that border Naquag Street. These are not considered public state, uh, shade trees as Naquag Street is not a town-owned road. Um, but they will be having those, um, altered on the property owner's own, um, financial standing for those trees. One of the trees is diseased, um, that is considered a shade tree. Um, Director Buckley's already confirmed in writing with the applicant that the DPW will be looking at that tree for safety reasons because it is a diseased tree. Uh, what is before the board today are three other trees that the, um, applicant believes to be nuisances because of the reasons stated above. Again, there is another diseased tree that, uh, the DPW is already looking at, and there is a fifth tree that the applicant is not having looked at in this hearing because it is far enough away from the, um, area of concern. And we have the applicants here as well.
Okay.
Before we start, can I ask for clarification? And maybe, uh, Joe?
Sure.
Um, public shade tree and the regulations behind it, is this, is that through like an easement? Is that an easement? I mean, we, uh, we own the tree, so we have an easement on the property for access to those trees? Is that how that works? But they technically own the land that it's on? How does that legally?
I only just got back. I only just finished getting my understanding of how the, how that works. And it's actually a state law, and it dates back to like eighteen ninety-nine. Um, these particular trees, the point is moved because they're within the right-of-way, best we can figure. We don't have an accurate survey of Central Tree, um, Road. We have one currently being done. But it's close enough that they're in the right-of-way, so there would be no reason to take an easement. These trees sit within the actual public right-of-way itself.
I do have, uh, the statute. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I answered this gentleman's question.
Kind of.
To end, so you don't need an easement to determine a public shade tree within five feet or so of the...
Right, I guess, if it's, maybe I, I'm sorry, I didn't articulate that properly. The right-of-way itself, that, that land, even though it's a right-of-way, the town has the right to access, is that land owned by the property owner? Or is it owned solely by the town?
Usually solely by the town, but I have to tell you, I mean, Central Tree Roads, it'll lay out, and not all towns, not all roads are written or decreed in the same manner.
Okay.
But it, you know, from a layman's standpoint, I would argue that that particular portion of Central Tree Road is the town's property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, could you give us sort of the same rundown from the perspective of the tree warden that you did for the other? And I'm just, I'm looking actually at Street View on Google Earth, and I, there's five large hardwood trees, right? Um, pretty much on the road's edge. There's no sidewalk on that side of the road. There's no sidewalk on Central Tree Road. One of them's near the mailbox. Then you have the break for the driveway, and then two more trees, and then you get to the end, and it looks like after that, there might have been old trees there, which, um, there's some new or plantings. So, we're talking about one diseased tree? Which one is the diseased tree?
Can I just, um...
Sure, we can back up.
It's not necessarily diseased as much. I think it was damaged in a storm, and it's actually on the property. It, it's within the right-of-way, but it, it's on the line between the two parcels, not necessarily on their parcel. And we don't mean to take it down. We're gonna maintain it. There's some dead branches that need to be cut down.
So, what I'm looking, is that the tree farthest from one twenty-two A?
Yes, that would be the one in question.
Okay.
I do have the, uh, regulation pulled up here. So, it's any tree planted within tw- uh, twenty feet of the layout of a public way. And that's for a street that's not a designated scenic way. If it was a scenic way, this hearing would have to be before the planning board. So, since it's not, that's why it's before the board.
Okay.
What were, if, and again, I'm not overly familiar with this. So, if something were to happen and the tree were to fall and hit something, who's liable? Is the town liable because the town maintains that shade tree, or would the property owner be liable?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah. Uh, I've actually conferred with an attorney, and it would be the town.
So, the acorn issue, for example?
Is the town's responsibility. Hence, while I, why I will be filing claims to subrogate my deductible, and I will let my insurance company subrogate with the town's attorneys regarding the rest of the, uh, financial responsibility.
Now, from a, what I don't is, from a legal standpoint, and just, let's say the tree comes down in a storm. That does not necessarily mean it falls to the town's responsibility.
That's different. That's an act of God.
Ma'am.
Right.
That's different.
Hold on, please. The chair's trying to maintain process.
Okay, so, let's, let's start with Joe. Can you just go through for us, in about the same way that you did for Prospect? So, we've got five trees on the property. One, which one is not up for discussion? Is it the one closest to one twenty-two A and farthest from the driveway? Out of the five? Yeah?
The one diseased tree.
Right.
No, the diseased tree is the farthest from one twenty-two A and the farthest up Central Tree. So, if we're going in order, and we're gonna number the trees, one through five, from, um, let's start from one twenty-two A and work our way away from, uh, the main road. Tree one, um, the rest, the applicant is stating that that is, they consider the fifth tree the tree that they would not like to have removed or altered. Tree number five, uh, is going to be maintained by the town. It has some damage. This document says it's diseased. Is, it's diseased or damaged?
During the hearing.
It's damaged. Okay, hold on. And then three trees, the ones that are... Uh, so there's an extended sort of circular driveway. So, you have three trees that have some, um, proximity to driveway. And if anybody wants to see this or pull it up when they're following, can do that.
What, what do the applicants want to do with those three?
They want those trees completely removed.
At the cost of the town, correct.
So, what happened at the hearing? Joe?
We basically just reviewed everything.
Yeah, and the discussion was, on the, on the part of the town, the discussion was what relative to the applicant's request? That the town agreed to take care of the one tree with some pruning?
Correct.
Which is tree number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have to decide on the others?
And that you would bring the rest, the three dogs?
Right. Now, there is one other thing, just to be clear. The trees that are on Central Tree itself, they're, they're three feet across. We, we don't have any resources in town to maintain them internally. You'd have to hire somebody. They'd probably be, I don't know, and I'm just guessing, a couple thousand dollars apiece to remove them. So, there's two sides to that coin, and we didn't discuss it in the hearing. At some point, we will eventually have to deal with them because just of their sheer size alone. But at the same time, you'd, you'd have to, if, if and when you decided to go forward with removing them, you'd have to commit some significant resources.
Alright.
Are they healthy trees?
Best I can tell, yes. Again, I'm, I'm not an arborist. I recently just took over the tree warden task. And I'm just getting up to speed, but they, they did, they looked healthy.
And they're oaks, right? I mean, acorns, all, all three of those, all five are oaks, but those three are oaks.
Yep. Alright, so, uh, we have the residents from, set, four Central Tree Road here. Um, Ms. Lassano or Mr. Rossman, just, um, name and address, which I know I just said, but you can do it for the record, and you can stay where you are. You can go up to the mic if you'd like, but there's a mic sort of above you. You're fine.
Sean Rossman, four Central Tree Road. About one mouse.
Denise Lassano, four Central Tree Road.
Lassano, thank you. So, do you want to add anything more to the picture that we've gotten so far? We have the document in front of us. We've heard from Mr. Buckley.
Uh, so just one correction to the town administrator. I did not say the tree was diseased. Um, when Mr. Buckley came out, and Director Buckley came out in June, he told me the tree was dead. The tree is not dead. It grows leaves. It's not dead. It's a healthy tree. The diseased tree. Uh, so, that is not my perception of that tree. I actually, Sean is a carpenter and loves trees. So, um, I don't want to do anything to the trees because they're an obstruction or they're not pretty to look at or anything like that. They, the first year that I was there, because of the weather, we didn't have acorns. So, I've only owned the property for two years now. When I bought the property, certainly there was, uh, some feelings that I have about the fact that it was not disclosed to me that those were the town's trees. Uh, I was in a conversation with my neighbor who owns Six that I found out that the town owns the trees. So, this year, because of the weather, we have the acorns. And unbeknownst to me, a few months after the acorns fell, we were going out to the car, and the sun was just shining one day, and I saw all of the dents. And then we saw that our camper had acorns come through the vents. And so, this is where we've now tried to mitigate any of the damage. However, if we have weather that produces acorns, I'm going to continue to have this issue. So, unless you're going to limb all of the trees, which would then kill them, it only makes sense to remove the trees. And my hope is, with Mr. Nicholson's experience in his previous holes and his two hundred thousand dollars in grant applications, he would certainly be able to successfully get a grant for the town to pay for the removal of those trees.
I don't think that's very likely, but appreciate the sentiment.
Tree warden's recommendation?
Um, I have one more question I have to ask. Um, when was the house built?
Nineteen fourteen.
So, it probably sits pretty close to the road.
It appears that way. Yeah.
And unlike new, more recent construction where it sits kind of back and you'd have that buffer, you don't have that at this location.
No. Based on the Google Earth image that we're looking at, it doesn't appear that way.
And that's my only motivation for considering removing the trees. Two basic things. One, we can't take care of them anymore. Um, and two, because of where their proximity is to this older style of construction, it, it, it could be a potential hazard.
Do you know anyone that wants a hardwood?
The carpenter? You're gonna have to season it, though.
I'm sure there's some families in town that are more than happy to take that beautiful hardwood, you know, once it's seasoned, to heat it. Home's warm in the winter time.
I did just look up the deadline for those grants, and they don't become available till Arbor Day for application.
So, it's ironic.
I mean, the fact, no, but the fact is, if we were in a situation of danger with a tree, you find the money, right? If it's a town responsibility for something this dangerous, you find the money. You figure it out whether it was, you know, going to town meeting, what we needed to do.
It doesn't sound like it's a public safety issue, though. It's more just the acorns.
Yeah.
Um, which, if you'll permit me, uh, you can see how there would be a perspective that if these are gonna cost a lot of the town's resources, realistically, that funding is only benefiting a small number of constituents, and the trees did exist when you purchased the property. So, I think there was a situation where, bought the property with the trees, maybe they didn't acorn that year. But I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, if you live in a houseboat and something happens, you're not gonna be surprised if the houseboat floods because you own a houseboat.
I would agree with you with the one stipulation, that when I purchased the home, it was not disclosed to me that they were the town's property, so I simply would have been able to maintain them.
Right. I mean, that usually is not disclosed because there are so many. Um, but it's, it's just a, I just want to float that out there as, you know, realistically, what we have to make in terms of decision and some of the, the input that, that we receive and some of the thought process there. I mean, it is going to cost thousands of dollars to remove those trees.
Yeah, certainly, keep in mind that the acorns do fall on that right-of-way where there are other motorists, motorcycles, et cetera, which could be an extreme hazard as well. In addition to, have you ever stepped on a group of acorns? It's quite slippery. It's quite dangerous.
Understood. I have that feeling every day when I work for the government, so I get it, but...
I, I hear what you're saying. And as a side note, I, I hate the thought of cutting down a healthy tree. Not the tree hunger, so to speak, but I hate the thought of cutting down a nice, healthy tree.
I would agree with you, and if we weren't in this type of meeting and we were out, I would show you the pictures of my friend's home, who is also a carpenter and builds these absolutely amazing things, and it, absolutely. I'll be honest with you, I had consulted with somebody who will cut trees down for free. And originally, I was going to have ten trees that line Naquag cut down. And, uh, he said to me, you're, you're gonna kill healthy trees, you know, and I said, well, you know, what about the danger? And he said, you, if you have them trimmed up, they'll be fine. So, instead of having somebody for free come down and kill ten healthy trees, I've decided to pay out of pocket to have them trimmed up and maintained.
So, would you be willing to cut these down for free if we go that route? Just because they're gonna be so expensive to remove?
The three in the front?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you, if you're willing to, I mean, I'll call that guy, and, you know, if he wants to come down and cut them down for free, if you approve it, you know, sure, great. I'm sure he would. That's some probably huge profit for him.
The label would.
Yeah.
Well, there's other things involved, uh, police details, um, there's power lines, there's...
Right, so perhaps the town would fund that then instead.
So I'll just suggest the other side of this. This is not the only old house in town. This isn't the only situation where we have a hundred-year-old tree, hundred-year-old trees, um, that are on, within the town right-of-way. This is opening up a pretty big can of worms. If somebody can come forward and say...
I don't like acorns.
I don't like acorns.
Yeah.
They create dings.
And, and I might try to sue you, which I get. Um, well within their rights to, to look into legal action. But where have we left the town at that point? I mean, we really, we just came out of a town meeting where we, as a board and finance committee as well, had supported, um, some money to replace some of the trees that we've lost over the years. And we're coming up on being a three-hundred-year-old town. We have some old trees here in this town. It's our job to kind of figure out where to draw that line as far as protection. We have a lot of trees. A lot of them are big. A lot of them overhang roads. We were talking before the meeting that those of us that, you know, were here during the ice storm, it, it was something to see. And unlike the communities that had municipal light, that probably took a more careful hand, um, when they were pruning and cutting trees down, National Grid did not, National Grid was very aggressive, cut down a lot of historic trees, um, here in town under the auspices of, we need to protect electric services. I don't know.
It is a tough call.
Let's be honest here, this is not necessarily a public safety threat. It's more of a, uh, financial problem with, with the, the dings to the, to the vehicle and a inconvenience.
Do you have?
And a cost, and a cost burden to the town, so.
Was, before, was anything presented at the hearing about the damage to the vehicles?
That would have gone through the, the, the claims process in town. We wouldn't have reviewed that.
That wouldn't have gone through any, no, they, I mean, we were informed that, um, the residents were going to be putting a claim in with the town's insurance
because of the twenty-five thousand that we had listed here. Um, approximate twenty-five thousand, but yeah.
Yeah.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get a visual of the acorn issue.
I keep staring at these.
I would feel more comfortable allowing the applicant to cut down the trees that they want if it didn't cost the town money.
So is that where we can go in the future, though? Somebody doesn't like a town tree and they're gonna, we're gonna let them cut it down?
Case by case, I mean.
Well, if it's causing damage to personal property, that's the argument.
I think that's, I know, but that's always a risk with these trees, right? Almost anything that's a natural feature can cause damage to property in the right circumstances. High winds can take limbs down of, from any tree.
Are these, sorry, if I may, are these trees on the side with the power lines? Does, does National Grid prune them at all going through for power lines and stuff?
They're opposite.
They're opposite?
Yeah.
The issue, though, too, is if, if there's nowhere else for these folks to park, and this issue keeps reoccurring, and we have to pay something or have a claim filed against it every time it reoccurs, it seems like that's also, that's poor, that's not being proactive on our part to address an issue that could recurrently cost taxpayer money.
They can cut down the trees they want at no cost to the town.
Do we know if the town is actually liable?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The, um, thing that's kind of odd about, um, chapter eighty-seven for public shade trees is that it doesn't matter if the town planted the trees or if a resident went and planted a tree on their own yard within the boundaries of so many, twenty feet of the right-of-way. So long as the tree is over, I think it's around four or five feet tall, it's considered a public shade tree and under the town's control. And I could have planted a tree on my property within that feet that's six feet tall, and I want to just cut a branch off of it, that's actually payable by a fine of two hundred dollars or, um, three days in jail per the statute. So.
How many people?
Yeah, eighteen ninety-nine, yeah.
How many people understand that?
Probably not many.
That also, you know, that sounds like a pretty good, if I want a free car thirty years from now, I'm gonna plant a tree that drops acorns on my property, and then the town can pay for it.
So, back in the eighteen nineties, when they wanted to protect the tree canopy of municipality, they put this law in.
I mean, I'm struggling, I can see both sides of the thing, and I'm struggling thinking, if I had a tree that was doing that kind of damage to my property, would I, would I, would I right away cut it down, or would I try to get one of the inexpensive carport-type things to prop? But that's on my own property, so I would always have the option to cut the tree down.
I mean, like, the issue is, though, that we're telling them they don't even have an option. There's no option.
No, I know. I'm just, you know what I mean? At what point does?
Yeah, the, uh, per section four of the statute, and I just looked it up, it's the only way someone can either alter or cut down a tree that's within that, no matter who plants it, is, uh, hearing in front of the tree warden and a witness, and then approval by the select board.
I, I, yeah, and I struggle with this, too, because there's lots of communities that are pretty militant about protecting their trees. We've just never really been in that situation, and I guess I would say yet, right? I think growth has maybe gotten us to the point now where we're seeing it more. Some of our trees that were planted a hundred years ago are a hundred-year size now, and the ones that did survive the ice storm and everything else that went on the past hundred years, they're, they're big. And there's a reason they're called public shade trees. They are shading that road. And in many cases, as we know, um, neighborhoods that are tree-lined tend to have a higher value.
Would you, um, would you replace them if you were to cut them down with something different?
If that were, uh, negotiation for cutting the trees down to make the property look nice, to shade the tr- streets still, then yes, I would consider doing that, sure.
I'm just curious. So, I mean, at this, at this point, I, I, because of the personal property issue and because the town's liable, I, I'm gonna have to agree with Jeff. I think, you know, they've offered to remove the trees. I mean, it, we don't want it to keep damaging property. It's also gonna hurt the resale value of their home now that this is public, so.
Well, it's not a Don Redwood. I mean, you're not gonna get a thousand years out of it. It's a hundred years old. What's the lifespan of this tree? At some point, it's gonna be a danger burden of getting too old and rotting and falling on the house or on the road and.
Right, but those are lifetimes, right? This is not a tree that anyone in this room, if another one is planted tomorrow, will see in their lifetime. Not anyone. Not this size, which is part of the problem, right? Which is why you get the protection of the trees, because it does take so long to get them to the size that these are at.
But they almost can't park in their driveway because of them, right?
Well, that also wasn't the intent of when this was written. I mean, that was during the Industrial Revolution and, uh.
It was written to get shade.
Exactly, that's the other issue, too. So I mean, there's a.
Shade is still an issue.
Oh, I know.
Right.
There's a reason that it was written.
So can I ask, is there a middle ground that would allow some time? You, I know you had one acorn season, and you talked about an arborist that came in and said limbing might, might... I, I don't know that it would kill the trees. I guess it depends how much to take off. If you limit sort of like the giving tree book, and there's nothing left, then yeah, it probably would kill the tree.
It's not gonna eliminate the acorns either.
Not completely, but it would lessen them. So I guess, is, is there a middle ground at all to be discussed, or is it sort of all or nothing?
They've come a long way. I mean, realistically, it's our responsibility. We're liable for the damage. They have offered to have them removed and offered to have them replaced. I think that's, that's going, that's a long way towards, towards meeting us. I mean, that's more than halfway, you know, realistically, they don't have to do anything.
Find a solution there. That's reasonable.
Let me just ask you this. Do you want to come park your car in my driveway during the acorn season?
I would park that jackies across the street.
Right, and I contemplated that myself. But in, in, in all honesty, would, would you want to come park your car in my driveway and go out to that?
Is this addressed to me?
No, I'm saying to anybody. I mean, it's, it's, obviously, it's a rhetorical question, but it's, it's something to think about, right? When I had guests, once we discovered it, I said, "Don't park in my driveway. Park in Honey Farms and I'll come over and pick you up."
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's.
And the acorn drop is what, six, it's about six weeks? Does anybody know in the room? How long does that last?
It was, it was definitely a long time, and if you saw the size of the acorns, I, I carry them around in my car to show people because I was absolutely astonished at how big they had gotten.
That means it's a really healthy tree.
I mean, you should see the squirrels right now. They're huge. They look like little cats.
So, to answer your question honestly, I.
But it's rhetorical. I really don't want you to.
No, it's fine.
I really don't want you to, to be perfectly honest. It was just food for thought. Food for thought.
I would agree with you.
So I think we're ready for a motion of something? Anyone?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we allow the homeowners, because of what's been discussed, to remove the trees, um, that are subject of the hearing.
At no cost to the town?
At no cost to the town. I mean, is that, my only question with that motion, if it's, if it's appropriate, because it's kind of not within the realm of, I'll leave that to, to Mike to be able to answer. Can we make that motion at no cost to the town? Because the trees are our responsibility.
Yeah, no, we can make the motion because it's on a person's, it's our care, but we're allowing them to do it.
Okay.
If that's not feasible in the end, they just come back.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
I'll stick it in.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next, so four to one. Alright, so three trees are coming down, yes?
Three.
And that's the three trees that we saw in the picture that are closest to your driveway with the two entrances? Yeah, okay. You are welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, but you do not have to.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for the conversation, too.
Thank you.
We are finally going to get to our public information session that was supposed to start at six fifteen, but why not? Started at close to seven fifteen. So this is the criteria for retail marijuana's request for information. Uh, we have a group of people that have been working on those criteria for quite some time. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is this the last order of business?
I believe it is. Yeah, Mike's update.
Did we want to take that out of order? Because I think if Jeff was gonna recuse, he might as well go home and enjoy the rest of his evening.
I was going to the tavern across the street, come, come.
No, I was. There's no reason to make you punish you for.
I, I don't, I don't believe, this is nothing? I don't know. I took everything.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll stick around.
So are we doing the marijuana update, the criteria?
Do we want to do the town admin first?
You know, do you want to do what first?
The town admin update so that Jeff can, can leave if there's no other orders of business, unless you want to.
That'd be nice.
Alright, quick, quick update?
Uh, yes, so just a quick update first from Laura Paradise in my office, that licensing materials for, um, this next calendar year were mailed out on October twenty-third. We've received some notice from the, uh, post office and a couple of those that are receiving, um, the applications that were mailed out, that there was some delay, um, in sending them out. They are in the mail, and if you have not yet received them, contact Laura at the select board's office, and she'll can scan them to you if needed. Those are due by the, um, by mid-December, um, so that everything can be in. Um, and if there's any questions on how to fill them out, Laura's gone to extra professional development training solely on licenses to be able to help people, um, sit down and work those out. So that's the first thing there. To answer a question that was brought up at town meeting regarding a property on Main Street that we currently are having issues with tax title on, um, after speaking with town council, just so that the public's aware, the town is currently in an agreement with, um, the property owners. Prior to that, the, um, residents, or the owners of that house were protected under the bankruptcy laws, uh, of the Commonwealth. Uh, so that is why what was suggested at town meeting could, um, not be done with those properties. And Treasurer Tuttle asked that I mention that today in my.
What was suggested at town meeting was preventing the individual from renting them, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We had lighting upgrades done to the community center. Um, new LED lights were installed in the interior of the building. It took about a week longer than we expected because when they came the first time, they brought the wrong fixtures for the big room. However, I'm told that those are now put in.
They are. They brought the wrong fixtures, and then they needed extenders, but they finished today. And it's so bright in there, it even reflects on the floor. Congratulations.
They will be doing that throughout the rest of our buildings. There will be water treatment plant soon, as well as the community hall building. For some of the offices, uh, again, a couple of the department heads asked me to say that, um, when you walk by, if the front light seems to be dimmed, but the back light is on, that's because some of the lights in the offices are motion censored. So for instance, in the treasurer's office where there's the, um, the bench that's there, that's, uh, the counter that someone can come in to pay their, uh, bill. If the light above the counter is off, but the light by where the desks are in the office is on, just go on in, so long as the door is unlocked, the office is open. It's just the motion sensor that makes sure that the lights, we aren't wasting electricity. Just might not pick up someone who's sitting at their desk. Mass DOT just has an update for our residents who may be traveling along Route Two in the near future. Next year, Mass DOT will be renumbering the exits along Route Two, so just as an advisory, uh, that was sent out. I feel for that because.
Run.
Boston today at three-thirty, and I got here at six-twenty-five.
We were in the same boat.
Great. Um, so to add to the fun, they're renumbering the exits along Route Two, so just so the residents are aware.
I hope the numbers are sequential still, unless they decide to have a lot of fun in their role. Who knows?
Never know.
They were good all these years. Why they haven't changed? I don't understand this, but.
Was it two-ninety they left one absent just in case they decided to add one? Was it seventeen?
Yeah, it's seventeen.
It just changed it to twenty-five, too.
The, we will be putting a survey up on our town's social media, as well as our town website soon. Superintendent John LaFlesh from Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School is, uh, has announced his retirement. And as part of the search process for a new superintendent of schools, the school committee has released a community input survey to see what the member towns are looking for in a new superintendent. Superintendent LaFlesh, as well as, uh, school committee member Joe Becker emailed that to my office today, and we sent that out to you all, as well to the town clerk's office. Um, and Mr. LaFlesh made sure that it was clear in his email that he wanted residents to have a chance to answer that. So that will be, um, up on our website. Please fill that out. The deadline to fill that out is December first, and the results will be used to help guide the school committee in their search for his replacement after his retirement.
Can we just get a clone?
Yeah.
Done phenomenal job.
The last thing, uh, that I'll say as part of is my update before the, um, RFI criteria, public info session, is that, um, I do want to say in a public setting that it was announced that I, um, announced my candidacy for an elected position in a different municipality. As I have stated to the members of the board before, I believe that this will not impede on my contractual obligations with the town. I will be staying as town administrator throughout the course of the campaign and look forward to getting the town ready for another town meeting and seeing what happens then. And then, speaking of my contractual obligations, um, the reason I was in Boston and then stuck in traffic today was because I am in my last of my three classes to receive my purchase officer certification, uh, that is required by my contract to, to complete by the end of my first year here. So that'll be done on Wednesday, uh, and then within the month, I'll find out how the exam went on that class. I've passed the other two, and then I'll receive full certification at that point. Thank you.
I have a quick question, if I may. It's, it should be quick. So, uh, a couple residents reached out to me about the Welcome to Rutland sign. I think by Treasure Valley that the sponsor sign is there, but the Welcome to Rutland sign is not. Is that still in?
They're not done yet.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that it didn't like.
Yeah, Mr. Steiner had a couple calls from resident, or from the people that sponsored, asking when their sponsorship would be up.
Okay.
So to make sure that they all got their chance at being seen by the public at the same time, he put up all the signs and sponsorships. He's still hand carving about three of the signs.
Okay.
Um, so since they're hand carved, hand painted, and the gold leaf and everything, um, those take some time. So we still, they'll, they'll be up by the end of the month, I'm sure.
I understand some of the materials are a little bit hard to obtain, too, because they're rarer, so.
No, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to get that out there for everyone, so, thank you.
Alright, so now we're finally gonna, we're finally doing this. Okay, here we go.
Before I recuse, are you gonna allow me to depart?
We are going to. You can depart at any time, really. Nobody.
Can I, uh, ask for one minute to reflect on the passing of two individuals we've had? Do you mind?
Yeah, no, I don't mind. Yeah, go ahead.
So just, uh, for the public, uh, an opportunity to reflect on a couple of losses that our community had this week. Some really great men. Vinnie Ross was ninety-three years old. He was late to rest today. He, uh, lives in the. He lives in the senior condominiums off of... Lived in the senior condominiums off of Maple Avenue. The residents of Rutland for forty-two years, and he was ninety-three years old. World War II Navy veteran. He had six children, a great person, and the community will mourn his loss. And also, Mr. Fred Warren Senior, he was ninety-five years old. And those who want to watch Uset, know, Mr. Warren, he was an agriculture teacher for thirty years, and he had a hundred and eighty acre farm here in Rutland. And he passed this week at the age of ninety-five. He, too, was a World War II Navy veteran. So just ask for a moment of reflection for the two of these great men. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to recuse.
Good night.
And just for the record, based upon advice of my day jobs counsel, I'm going to recuse on all matters related to the marijuana until I retire. It's still a violation of federal law.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, so in front of us, we have the evaluation list. It's pretty much two pages, double-sided, single sheet, double-sided. And then we have an additional email that was printed specifically from the Chief of Police. We have... Who's here?
Jones.
Where'd they go?
Joe.
Somebody's here. Joe's here.
Seth might have left, because Barry have their meetings.
Yeah, I think he needed to get to that other meeting.
Yes.
Unfortunately. So we have a follow-up from the chief with some of his concerns. So, can you...
Sure.
Okay.
Basically, I'll go through the bullets on this list, why they were selected and where they came from. The... All of these criterions came from... Criteria, excuse me, came from KP Law as things that were put in RFIs from other municipalities across the Commonwealth. The... After I go through the different criteria, I do want to address a question that my office has received with regard to federal subpoenas that have been issued across the Commonwealth in relation to host community agreements and how the town has actually already protected itself. And then, after that, go a little bit into the overview as to how the process will go. But this public information session is mainly on the criteria that go into the document that will be before the board at their next meeting for release, and then the timeline will be set at that meeting. But at the meeting where we had Attorney Lofman here with us, the board voted to, after the working group made the initial criteria, that we would have a public information session in case members of the public said, "I'd like to see this added," or "I think this is a little excessive." So, without further ado, the first part of what we're looking for is applicant background information. This is standard information that you would see in any request for information, request for proposal, and any other official solicitation that's put out by the town for good services or information. Name of the business, document... Documentation of the business registration. Here it would be with the Cannabis Control Commission, and a certificate of good standing. Pretty self-explanatory. The certificate of good standing is a town requirement for whenever the town issues a license or anything of that nature, that they're paid up to the town's taxes. And that was passed by bylaw at a recent town meeting. Certificate of non collusion, that's required by state law whenever we go out for a solicitation. It's boiler print that the town actually provides, is as part of the solicit... When someone requests the packet, where they certify under the pains and penalty of perjury that they have not committed fraud or colluded with anyone with regard to what they're submitting. Notarized cover letter of commitment. This came from the working group of department heads, basically saying, once you've turned in a proposal, you're willing to stick through that proposal if awarded, and you wouldn't back out. Proposed address of the facility and a proof of a site plan. That's... You see that with any standard. It's standard for any solicitation set out, so that the town planner's office can basically review the site. Evidence of compliance with local zoning, similar thing, standard. The names and resumes of executives and managers, and individuals contributing significant capital to operation. Again, standard, you want to see who's running the company. And evidence of no outstanding or unresolved criminal proceedings resulting in mandatory disqualification under the Code of Massachusetts regulations. Again, standard, particularly where this... The cannabis industry, this is something that you see standard in those types of RFIs. So that's the first section. So if there's any questions there, I can answer those.
I do have a quick question, and I'm not sure... For the notarized cover letter of commitment, I understand that. Is there a... Is it common to have a up to however long, so that it's not...
Yeah, we can't go in perpetuity.
Right.
The way that the statute goes, and basically what we'd write into the RFI is that the... That's actually a good way to talk about RFIs in general, if you will. State statute dictates specifically what an RFP, or an RFQ, or an IFB qualifications, proposals, and invitation for bids, for those that don't know what the acronyms stand for. An RFI is up to the jurisdiction to determine what process they'd like that to follow. So what the group of department heads is recommending is that we follow the procedure that mimics the RFP process. And what that is, is it's still a request for information, but it's criteria-based. It's sealed until it's received.
It allows us really to kind of dictate what we're looking for in a proposal on a competitive basis.
Right, my question...
And with that, the letter of commitment could not be more than two years.
Okay. That was what I was asking, was where that upper limit for the town, as well as for any potential business.
I also have a question, if you were... Are you all...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess my question is, to clarify how the process is going to work, particularly with the applicant background information. And is this going to be... So the way that I would envision this, and the way that I've run some of these before, is... So let's say you receive the names and resumes, all of the boilerplate information. That gets checked by the town for completeness, prior to the competitive review process, and it kept separate, so that those reviewing the... Whatever we receive, whether it's one or ten, we don't know who applied, and I think that that ensures fairness when you're being competitive. And I want to make sure that's the process we're following. Or are the reviewers going to be privy to all of the boilerplate, as well as the applicant information?
So, excellent question. It's one my office has actually been asked before about this process. What this would be, and again, similar to the RFP process, would be, for every bullet point that's here, that makes it into the RFI, a third party outside the group, in this case it will most likely be Laura in my office, would actually go through the different proposals and make sure that each bullet point is hit. If a bullet point is missing, and there's... I'm making up numbers now. Say there's twenty bullet points here, and someone hits nineteen but misses twenty, then we actually are not allowed to review that one, because it's an incomplete submission. And that's part of, again, the blind there is Laura's not part of the group there. Then, we go on and evaluate the business information, which is the next step. At that point, once that evaluation is done, we go back, and because those scores are already ranked on the rubric, on a separate sheet, the business information. Then we go back and we review applicant background information, because at that point, the step is actually to check references on the applicant.
To make sure everything.
Yeah.
So it prevents somebody from writing, you know, just to the competitive criteria, writing the best application you've ever read, and then you go back and they actually don't have...
Correct.
Any of this stuff, right.
But now those... The review of the business information is already set.
Yep.
So it's actually a three-step, four if you count checking the references at the end. Any other questions on what we're talking about so far? Okay. So in terms of business information, this is actually what we were talking about in my course today. So I was actually able to talk to the instructor at the Inspector General's office after and about opinions. They can't provide official legal advice, but again, opinions on if you were doing this, how could we move forward here? Business plan is a common thing that you see in, again, solicitations issued by a municipality. A market analysis, organizational... Organization management, sales strategies, funding requirements, and financial projections. For the financial projections, that's basically financial statements from the business. Again, for that one, someone who has a background in reviewing financial statements actually has to be the one to make the recommendations to the working group on that. So the town accountant, Dan Hayes, will actually... Will review those. I should say, too, none of these... None of the documents that are submitted as intended to be part of an RFI, in case they're then picked up and then later turned in later, or are submitted and still under review, none of those documents become public documents until after the award has been put forward.
Right.
They remain confidential, private documents until that is issued, just to make sure that the process maintains a fair process. Two of these types of documents do not ever become public documents, and that's any financial statements or financial projections and a security plan, for obvious reasons. The next bullet point, evidence of financial backing sufficient capitalization or investment to get the business operational. Again, this is standard for most solicitations for goods and services, in particular, but other solicitations that municipalities set out, just to make sure that if the business is awarded a host community agreement, that they'll actually survive. Particularly just because of how lengthy the process can be. It's supposed to make sure that the process keeps moving forward from there. And again, that's standard Commonwealth-wide. Proposed timeline and development plan, plan for employee staffing, local job creation, and wage range. As if they planned to hire local, what the proposed stuff is. And again, these are just proposed ideas.
Should we move that to... I want to know if the board would consider moving that to the comparative criteria? Because I would like to think that we would view it as advantageous if we were to hire local, if that's something we'd want to consider or look at.
I think I've seen it in both, to be honest with you. Again, it's in this section because that's where KP put it, but I have seen it in both.
I mean, I kind of would like to see something about plan for staffing in this section, not necessarily... Maybe not necessarily down to the local job creation wage range and loop that into the...
Right. Maybe like a statement that they'd be willing to hire, or they'd be looking at any possible...
Well, or I would just even... Yeah, but I would even just kind of at this level, at the business information level, I'd kind of just like to see what their anticipation is for staffing, and their needs, and, you know, what level of experience they're look... Would be looking for maybe a little bit, and not necessarily like of these X number are going to be low. I think that that information could come in in the comparative, for sure.
And if you notice in the comparative, too, it's potential for job creation. So it is actually listed in both, for that reason. So you see it.
We could, for example, add... I don't know if we're doing it points, or... Well, it is going to be points, because even if it's advantageous highly or not, you're going to allocate a point score to it. If we would add maybe a point to the application, if they committed to hiring, I don't know what the threshold would be, fifty percent or more local, or whatever. It's just something to think about, because I've seen that with, you know, construction projects, with housing development in Worcester, for example. They really work with the unions to make sure that they're hiring from certain areas.
I think... I don't think I'm disagreeing with you. I think I'm looking at it a little bit differently. I think I'm just suggesting that we split out... We don't even, at this level, for business information. Maybe I'm not understanding the process fully, that we don't even concern ourselves so much about where those people are coming from and what their salaries might be for the position at this level, at the business information level. It's just more of a number and a... And then move the other information as far as local applicants, wages, veteran priority, whatever we decide into the comparative criteria.
Split it into two.
Right. My understanding, just to clarify, we're on the same page, is that what's going to be scored, and only what's going to be scored by a review committee in this blind process, is going to be the comparative criteria. The individuals doing the scoring are not privy to the rest of this information.
To the applicant background.
But the business information, they would be.
Yes.
So how are we maintaining anonymity if we're requiring everything in the business information that can also be computed... We can be viewed with comparative criteria?
So, I didn't word this correctly, we move... So you start with comparative, to make sure everyone's on the same playing field. Then you go to the business info, and then you go to the applicant background.
Okay, so we're going to score this prior to seeing and reviewing this for completeness?
Correct, yes. And then this also does get scored, just at not a higher threshold, as high a threshold as the comparative. So there's a check for complete, but then there's also a way to make... Again...
Like largely responsive, unresponsive?
Yes.
So it's not... It's just, okay, I got you.
Yep.
So to that point, under business information, would it be appropriate to include then simply staffing and anticipated wage range, and possibly business hours? It's probably something that everybody's going to want to know.
Yeah.
And then, on the other side, on our comparative list, we'll do whatever we get to when you get to that point, as far as local. Okay.
I'd like to... That... I think we were talking about the same thing. It was just... Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The next one, plan and source for maintaining marijuana product supply for retail sales operation. Just making sure that the product that isn't being sold is kept safe, so that someone's not... Doesn't have access to go in and steal the product and then try to sell it on the street.
So before you go on to the next criteria, so as you know, this is not a hearing. This is a public information session. I think what we'll do is stop here, see if anybody has questions about page one, so that this front page, or any suggestions or any commentary, and otherwise we'll keep moving. And Mike, my question, my only one, is relative to evidence of financial backing and sufficient capitalization. It's... The way it's phrased, you think, well, it's a little bit subjective. What will be the criteria there for sufficient capitalization?
To that point, is that already addressed when they go through the CCC licensure process?
Oh.
Because that would just... That would kind of nix the whole need for that question, even.
Well, they would just be providing the CCC document.
If they would be providing, exactly.
Yeah. It's again, I brought up that same question to Attorney Lofman when we spoke about this. Part of it is covered by the CCC section. But again, this is something that municipalities have put in to make sure that it's a business who they could see being successful in the town.
So what is the definition of sufficient? What is our definition of sufficient?
That's something that the department heads and I are... We'll have to decide while working with Dan, who will be the one reviewing all financial stuff.
Okay.
Or the board could... If the board chooses, you could also, rather than having us come up with something, the board could say, "This is what we feel as that manner." But again, that's why the statute, if this was an RFP, would say someone who the chief procurement officer views as a expert in the financial field for reviewing financial statements shows that they are in a stable condition. So again, I've... So that's where I thought of Dan.
I mean, that's common with RFPs for property acquisition. I guess my only... My only thought on that through the chair is it's tough, because I want to make sure that... My concern is that Cannabis Control Commission has long advocated for, at least in principle, opening up opportunities for small businesses, for minority and women-owned businesses, and veteran-owned opportunities. And historically underrepresented populations like that, as you may know, have a harder time obtaining financing or going through some of these processes. And I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently excluding folks by making that criteria or whatever it is too stringent. Obviously, we need to make sure that we're protected in terms of our investment, which is what this is, but it just... I don't want to exclude minority or women-owned businesses, or small businesses, for that matter, through anything in this process. So...
And, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I think it's going to be to the points there, it'll be very hard to quantify that, because... And maybe this is something we add to business information. We don't... I don't think, unless I missed it.
It's in competitive.
Yep.
No, 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 have any information relative to size of facility. So when we start talking about sufficient market capitalization, well, that's very different for a two-thousand-square-foot facility versus a fifteen-thousand-square-foot facility. And so I think when we start talking about the financial people taking a look, they're going to be taking a look to the point... they're going to be taking a look to the point it was just brought up, which is that sort of generalized, um, sufficient capitalization. And it's, maybe it won't be able to have a definition to what is sufficient because we won't know until we see-
I know that Cannabis Control Commission also, on top of the state process for being certified as, uh, minority women or a veteran owned business, they do have a social equity program. And I'm wondering if we could get more clarification on what that is and, and maybe incorporate that somehow into, uh, comparative criteria.
Business owners that make a certain percentage of AMI.
It's to allow people kind of a step up. I mean, and again, it's, from what I understand, that process is for historically disadvantaged groups that are trying to get into the industry, uh, that make, I think it's 80% of AMI or lower to be able to start a business and, and bring it up to, to be competitive with some of these, the larger firms.
It's almost like a bonus point.
I'm thinking how this process might work. And so I'm wondering if, I'm not, I would like to see something of this general idea stay here, but I'm thinking if, I'm kind of thinking of it from the reverse. If, say, through the compar, comparative criteria, we determine that they would be a really great fit for our town between the municipal impacts and the comparative criteria, that this is like, you know, ranked the highest. And then we get to business information and that piece, the financial backing, especially the sufficient capitalization, is not as stellar as another one. I think that that would be a conversation that we need to have, but in my mind, I would not exclude a business that looked less stellar in that if-
Depending on what it is.
If it met-
But that's a conversation, I think, we need to have.
But I, so to my mind, I don't want to see something of this magnitude excluded completely from our evaluation, but I do think that we need to either rethink the wording of it or think about how we might process that.
It's tough too, because I, the way the program works, so if you, for example, were to apply to the social equity program, and you're making, I think the limit was something like between 40 and $45,000 a year. And you're trying to get your foot in the door, you're also less likely to get financing and funding. So it's kind of like the state in some ways has almost, you know, boxed these folks in to an untenable position. And I really think we have an opportunity here, you know, through this process to state loud and clear that we have certain values and that we value certain things. And that's, I think, the most important concern I have about this process.
And I think, if I may, Sheila, going back, I think this was a rather contentious topic in town when it was a ballot question for the mass general election. Right, it failed. And I know that there's still very strong feelings in town about that. So I think we would not be doing the town any favors by not having this as a consideration, but that it needs to be looked at as a holistic package. That I think it just needs to be balanced with.
The, um, so to answer some of those questions too, uh, for the, what the building looks like and size of the building, that's actually on the next page, so we haven't gotten to that yet. Yeah.
Yeah, the building plan.
Building.
Because, we'll get to that. Um, but as for the, um, other, I think those are all valid points and a good conversation for us to have as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about page one? Comments, additions, you want to do, um, name and address? You can stay where you are and thank you.
Steven, join me, 99 River Road in town. And I was just wondering if, uh, it says retail marijuana establishment, is the town going to set any standards for cultivator's license?
At the moment, the only thing we're talking about with this process is the single retail license.
Yeah.
So, are they going to establish guidelines for cultivators? I'm not asking what they are.
Sure. You mean like for farming, either indoor or outdoor?
Yes.
Okay.
If I, um, so it is allowed in the bylaw. The bylaw limits one retail sales location, but is silent on, um, cultivation sites. So it is allowed in town. Uh, in terms of where, um, what regulations would go with that, it'd be a separate conversation similar to, um, what we're going through here with the retail stuff. Um, I don't think it'd be as long because we're kind of setting, it's very similar to what we see here in terms of, um, site plan, management control, uh, and things of that nature. So I actually think what we're going through here-
To be precedent.
Is it, would set precedent for what we'd be seeing in a cultivation site. The bylaw states specifically that, um, for instance, there are certain areas, certain types of businesses are allowed. For instance, um, research facilities are allowed at the Rutland Heights property, but that's the only type of, cannabis related business that's allowed in that area. So there are, the bylaw breaks it down specifically as to what can go where. So where, the regulations as to where a cultivation site could go are dictated by the bylaw. The, there is no cap on the number, um, because again, the only number that was capped was retail adult use sales. Uh, there, there could be a, a number that's in there, I'm just not familiar because I'm in the adult use mode in my head with that part of the bylaw, so we'd have to check there. But I think this sets the precedent for how we would evaluate something like that moving forward.
The other person I had was, uh, I've looked over some of the requirements for, you know, the CCC. And it doesn't look like a, a lot of the things listed here are additions to, to their requirements. Is that, is that the case or, I mean, is it basically follow the state's?
It follows state standard, um, particularly because while there is a bill that was proposed before the legislature and a lawsuit that was filed, um, neither of which have been brought to completion. The bill is still in its hearing stages, um, and the case, um, seems to be stalled. I'm not sure why. Uh, that would allow the Cannabis Control Commission to have review authority over host community agreements. They currently do not have that. So the, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission just sees the check, yes, I have a host community agreement. So this is our check, just like we don't have access to what gets submitted to the CCC. It's just our check to be able to have that back and forth because there is no, this is a process that was set solely for local jurisdictions to review that.
Uh, anybody else? Any questions on page one? Otherwise, we're going to go to, everybody turn, okay? Turn your paper. We're going to go to page two.
So this section is municipal impacts. This is what our, this is the section where we kind of decided which department heads, when we went back, um, and set the working group of department heads, decided who was going to do what based off of what department reviews these specific items. So a management and operations plan, a, I'm going to skip around to just stick with the department heads. So the management and operation plan, a proposed building design and signage, plans for external nuisance mitigation. Those are things that the town planner would have a part in reviewing, probably the most substantial part in reviewing based off of his expertise and then present the group with his thoughts on the matter. A security plan, a traffic and parking plan, a trash pickup plan. And also part of the external nuisance mitigations. Those would fall into the police chief and the fire chief. So these are broken down into the different department heads who are helping to review that thing. So, uh, the list is a management and operations plan, again, to make sure that it's a sustainable business. A security plan, this again, is kept confidential even after the documents are made, the other documents are made public. A traffic and parking plan, um, to make sure that there's no undue burden that the business is placing on the public due to those issues. A proposed building design and signage for the reasons listed earlier. Uh, plans for external nuisance mitigation in terms of light noise, odor, debris and solid waste disposal. Same thing with the trash pickup plan that we talked about earlier, is if there's waste from the products, we don't want people then dumpster diving to get the trash marijuana that's in the dumpsters. It's a public health concern. It's also, we just don't want people going and dumpster diving to then go sell stuff on the street. Potential finan, uh, financial commitment to a municipality, non-monetary inducements, incentives and other benefits to the municipality. Now, this is something that has brought a lot of questions in the past. The town cannot specifically ask for a specific thing. There was a instance a couple of years ago with a medical, uh, host community agreement where a city east of here said, we'll give you an HCA if you buy us a new school bus. That's not an inducement, that's a bribe. So.
So we can't ask for it, but we can wink, wink, nudge, nudge, which is what this is.
We can't ask for it, but we can accept. It's because it's something that the courts have been silent on and the CCC allows. We can accept it as something that helps induce, a, it helps weigh a decision one way or the other if it benefits the town. Because originally, these were put in to help mitigate any excess expen, extra expenses that the town has. Uh, as a result, ex, police, um, calls, uh, roadway usage, things of that. It's meant to help supplement the extra money we're spending as this business comes in.
I mean-
In addition to the 3% excise tax.
That's the thing is, I mean, you would make the argument that the taxes would cover that. I mean, that's, that's placing business in communities. I just, there's optics, and this is why the federal government's involved right now, is because there's optics throughout the state of cronyism and about accepting these things, uh, in lieu of doing our due diligence. And I just, I, I don't like the idea of, of that being included. I, I know that we're going to end up including it. It's just, it seems like Cannabis Control Commission's lost any semblance of control over this issue. And it's coming back to bite communities in, in the rear end, and it's really preventing people from accessing opportunities that they otherwise would not have. So when you, this Cannabis Control Commission talks about wanting small businesses to get involved or incentivizing other disadvantaged populations, those are the exact populations that cannot afford to do this. So it's excluding them from the process entirely.
I think the question I have is, this says non-monetary.
Yes.
I hate the word inducement, by the way. That's, it just sounds exactly like the way you're headed, right? I mean, a non-monetary benefit to a municipality, I can't off the top of my head picture what one of those might be. And I actually don't want an example yet, but what I-
School bus.
What I, yeah.
Well, no.
No, but that's, that's monetary. And I think where I'm, where I'm headed is, and somebody brought it up, knowing that Rutland initially at the ballot, um, when it was question four, voted it down narrowly, very narrowly, but still voted it down. We clearly have a population in town that is really struggling with the fact that we're bringing this business in here at all. Um, and so we then need to look at how are we, you know, what's that balance of, you want to do right by the business owner and you want to do right by the community as a whole. So at what point, so you know, and again, is the phrasing kind of causing a little bit of red flag? I get that. Non-monetary inducement incentive?
It's the principle behind it. It's nothing to do with the phrasing.
The question is though, and then now I'm going to get back to an example. What is a non-monetary benefit? Cause what you had said was i, in a, say, for example, disadvantaged population, um, an applicant such as that might not be able to quote, afford it. But if it's non-monetary?
No, I think you're confusing. Monetary is like a cash payment. I'm doing it non-monetary is any good that has like a vehicle or a roof or a building or something like that.
I was taking it much stricter than that.
So a-
If it has value to me, it's monetary.
In both categories, and it has in different places too. So monetary can just be, we'll pay the town a lump sum of $10,000 a year on top of our 3% gift fee and 3% sales tax. It could, uh, the non-monetary inducements can be in a form of a couple of different things. It could be a donation to a local food pantry, an annual commitment to a donation to a local charity. It could be education on cannabis use offered at the facility. It could be, um, commitment to, um, suppo, uh, supporting local organizations or town events, things of that, that nature. It's, so it's not a check to the town, but it's helping, it's either helping the town through the education stuff that they could provide at their center or helping different organizations in town that aren't direct, the town isn't taking the check.
We don't ask this of any other type of business though, coming into town. I mean, it's just, this is-
But no other business comes with the risks that this one does.
A liquor, liquor store.
Fair enough. I'll agree with you completely on that, but, but that ship has sailed quite some time ago. And maybe, maybe in 50 or 100 years, they'll be that way with, with this industry as well, but they're not there yet.
Do I agree? It's odd that this is something that the courts are allowing? Absolutely. But it's-
Are they allowing? Well, there's a lot of lawsuits pending right now.
Yeah.
Or with this exact issue.
And you know, I was going to get to that at the end, but I think I, I'll get to it now, just because it's- The federal subpoenas that have been issued, and when I spoke to KP about this too, the places, it's the opinion of town council, um, and I agree with it as well. Our insulation, or not insulation, because we can get a subpoena for some, whenever the grand jury issues it. Now, one, we can't, we can't fully exactly know what the subpoenas are being issued on because it's before a confidential session of a grand jury. However, from the places that have been subpoenaed, it's places that have issued letters of non-opposition to a host community agreement, which are unlimited by law. Host community, uh, agreements are what's limited. So, no, it's, we could issue 14 of these if we wanted to, because then the C, it's up to whoever gets to the CCC's process first. And then that's, then once they obtain that license from the CCC and open up in town, that's caps it. So this is the gateway to the CCC. So what municipalities have been doing is while the cap is technically at who gets the license and opens up from the Cannabis Control Commission, municipalities have been vetting businesses more through the HCA process. What hap, what is, had allegedly happened in a southeastern municipality, uh, near, it's in Fall River.
Yeah.
Public dollars.
It's not secret.
What allegedly happened in Fall River was the mayor allegedly was issuing, the, yeah, the, yeah.
Sorry.
Was issuing, uh, non-opposition letters and host community agreements after meeting one-on-one with a company and saying, I will give you this if you give me that. Now, again, as was stated before, we cannot legally ask for something. We can accept something, but we can't close doors behind everything and say, you know, I really want that school bus.
Okay, but not knowing what's going on at the federal level, it's not the worst idea in the world to take a very conservative outlook to that particular bullet point. And I'm back to the phrasing of it, and I'm also back to my reading of it, which I'm sorry, if something has a value, a purchasable value, to me, it's monetary. And so when I'm thinking non-monetary benefits to the municipality, and again, I, I really, I don't have a laundry list of what those are. I think I would like to see what an applicant to the RFI comes up with.
Yeah, the-
But it's not a school bus. Like, you see what I mean?
So back to where the opinion of town council is, we, by undertaking the process of an RFI, have made it so that we are not allowed to have these backroom meetings where we sit one-on-one with an applicant and say, you know, I'm really not sure if I'm going to give you this, to the point where it's not outright asking someone, but you can kind of tell that there's a-
A quid pro quo.
Yes.
Oh my god.
By having a sealed process with outlined criteria, we make it so it takes that subj, a portion of that subjectivity that's been the legal issues for these municipalities out of it. So it's a sealed process.
When you unseal them, right?
Yeah.
So to the point of, you've got one applicant without the deep pockets, one, you know, 15 other applicants with deep pockets.
Yeah. Where the corruption issue comes into place, which is what's the issue in the case against Fall River, is if we were to open them and then go back and be like, no, we don't like what you said, what else can you give us? That's where the corruption issue comes into place.
It's not just the corruption, it's just that by allowing for these things, the state is actively excluding people that they're verbally and written trying to incentivize. And it's just kind of a catch 22 where you're incentivizing these folks, they can't compete with some of these agreements. I mean, some of the agreements in Worcester are, you know, pretty lucrative for the community. It's just, I don't know. Uh, it's just, we don't ask this for any of the type of business and it's, it's hard.
But to answer Wayne's question, state courts have upheld this. The federal courts are looking to make sure there's no corruption.
Of course they have, because everyone's making money off of it.
Yeah. I wish it was, I wish it was completely eliminated, but-
I would agree with Wayne on that.
Sure, but it's a new industry and unfortunately, it's right, we're at the beginning of it and this is what we're seeing. And, uh, my guess is they probably saw similar things when prohibition got lifted. So at some point, we'll be at a point where you don't need special traffic control and don't have additional issues of people coming in from farther away to make a purchase at a store that you're- to make a purchase at a store that your community happens to have, because they're everywhere. We're not there yet, I, I think that's why we have the list from the police chief in particular, because even if you've got a security plan for the location, it's not helping a community deal with the traffic that's coming in from every perimeter, and the, the issues, the concerns with that, so I, I get it.
The revenues that we're bringing in aren't enough to cover the expenses, then why are we even exploring it? I guess that's my question, is, is this gonna cost the town money in the long term, cause it sounds like.
I think it might in the short term, actually, cost the town money. I, I think supporting an industry like this right now, in the short term, must have some cost benefit analysis, right? So we watched Lester first, what was it, first east of the Mississippi or something? Taking in an enormous amount of money, and also dealing with an enormous amount of traffic for a fairly short amount of time, I actually think that has leveled off to a point already. Um, but you know, and, and I think the argument that they made at the time was that it would be like that if anything opened, that's brand new, Ikea. So it's not always so much the industry, but in this particular case, where you have additional security concerns, because of the price point of the one item that's getting sold, or the one, right? I, I, I think we just, we're dealing with this now, most likely the next generation will have to.
And when we met with the department, it's just at the last bullet point under municipal impacts, um, commitment to community plan, that was again, in case someone had an interpretation like what you had Sheila, where, um, there's confusion as to what non-monetary means.
No question.
It just shows that they'll help the community out, that's, that's basically a.
Okay.
Restated one, commitment to community, just to clarify that.
Oh, great.
Competitive criteria evaluation of applicants, again, this is what we start with, and this is what's anonymous. Knowledge and understanding of the licensing procedures. We'll see that if there's a license from the CCC, or the, uh, business license from the CCC, not the o- operating license.
Yeah.
Prior cannabis experience.
Can we, can we stop real quick?
Sure.
It's a brand new industry, I mean, how many folks that are getting these things have prior cannabis experience? I mean, in some ways, I would be skeptical of somebody having prior cannabis experience applying.
A lot of what the state is seeing is former medical, or people that have had experience with a medical.
You're laughing, but I, I actually, better for worse, right or wrong, I do think the state has been giving, um, some points in some fashion, ways, shape or form to somebody that's been dealing with medical, because they at least know that they've been dealing with the product.
Sure.
I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying that they've certainly been doing it.
Every step of the way, they're excluding folks from entering into the industry, and it's just.
Mm-hmm.
It's unbelievable to see the, they're curtailing all of these opportunities to certain groups of people.
Quality of a business plan, again, they'll submit the business plan, um, the business name will be blacked out for this view, when we review competitive criteria. Um, and it's just based on the business plan. Uh, proposed development timeline, potential for job creation, uh, community connection and local residency, that's a checkbox that'll say, do you reside within X number of miles of the town senate? So we have to pick a town and say, do you reside within X number of miles of that? That's how we can determine what local is, because you give, one of the things we could do is, give extra credit for someone who's a local business owner.
Can I actually, instead of putting it as, do you live within certain amount of miles?
Mm-hmm.
I would rather see it as, is the business owned by an entity within?
Yeah.
Because realistically, you have certain companies that have parent organizations that are maybe out of state.
Mm-hmm.
So.
No, that makes sense too, I was just trying to word it real quick, to be honest. Um, but yeah, it's, that's what you get points on for being a local business owner.
So not residency, local business address?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, you could choose either, um, but what Mitch was just saying, or, and/or, yeah.
And/or, yeah, and it makes sense.
And, yeah, okay.
Traffic and parking management, financial commitment and other inducements, this is where it goes to either one, and I would not pick both. I would say it should go in one or the other, I see this under the municipal impacts, not as competitive criteria.
I, like.
What are you gonna give me?
I agree.
You should have a cipher, where if you go over it, you can read school bus.
No, I think that it should, I think it should be included, but I don't think that it should be the first pass, what are we kind of excluding based on what this is? Because I think that that puts a lot of weight on of, on it, when I think, I'm hearing that I think that there's a lot of other criteria that we want to consider also.
Yeah.
But I do think that it's important to, to know, not necessarily as the be-all and-all, so that's why I would like to not see it in our kind of first pass, and rank, rank it on excluding that piece. How many passes are there? Well, this is what we're seeing first, right, to rank first.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Um, geography diversity and proposed location is a fancy way of just basically saying site plan and review.
Where are you putting it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, make sure it's compliant with the zoning, and then see where it falls in with the neighborhood.
Realistically, I mean, for that to be compared, there's only a few places that it could really even go in town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, for a retail sales, yes, there's very few places that it could go.
Yeah.
And then provides opportunity for women-owned or minority-owned businesses. Um, again, this is because this is something, as was stated earlier, that the Cannabis Control Commission said should get precedence on, so this would probably be a higher weighted on the criteria list. Um, but.
Does that include veteran as well?
That's, falls under the minority.
It falls under the, okay, that's right, yep.
So there's a definition?
Yes.
Yes, that's through, what is it, chapter nine, through the state?
Yeah.
Process?
Yeah, there's a state-specific procurement law.
You would have to be designated as that designation, Sheila, to obtain that, that qualification.
I hate that phrasing, just gonna put it out there.
What phrasing?
All of it, women-owned or minority-owned, what, what exactly, I'm sorry.
It's mainly in the construction, business, uh, procurement contracts that this comes up in the statutes, but it has a specific definition.
It's all state vendors, in fact, if you're a nonprofit and you do business with the state, they actually collect all of the businesses that you do business with over the course of a year, it fall under that category.
Yeah. And you get special precedence of those.
That's right, so I mean, you do get extra consideration, and, and to answer your question, it's defined very strictly by the state of the historically disadvantaged populations.
I recognize that, I think the phrasing is antiquated.
Yeah.
I, it's, I'm not really questioning the process, I.
What should it say?
Not that.
Not that, well, I mean, that's what we had, the state, that's what the state provides, so.
Just trying to start a fight.
And then to read.
It's gonna make the paper now, I mean, yeah.
Uh, and then to read Chief Monaco's letter, uh, he said, Mike, as police chief, my major concerns with reviewing the marijuana retail proposals will be centered on the following. A traffic and parking plan, I'll be looking to make sure that the plan addresses any potential impacts of traffic in the proposed location, and that there is a plan for adequate and sensible parking. A security plan, I'll be looking for a plan that addresses security issues, desirable plans include alarm systems, a high-quality CCTV system, and any other measures that would reduce the risk of robbery or b- burglary. Furthermore, I would want to see what plans the business has in place for properly identifying customers, to make sure that they are of age. Uh, and then final trash and product disposal plan, I am concerned with the removal of unsold-dash-expired products. Where does it go, and how, I would like to see a plan that addresses what happens to unsold product in addition to the business's plan for regular wa- waste removal. Chief Monaco.
You've kind of addressed all those, and these were quite criteria.
Yeah, and that's, I'm just saying, that's why they were put in there, is because he wasn't unable to make it tonight, but he wanted to make sure people understood why he asked for those.
Great.
So, under, and we're gonna get some questions in a second, so under comparative criteria, I was just taking notes as everybody was talking, the potential for job creation, uh, am I correct in thinking that we wanted to specify local job creation under comparative criteria? Was that assumed under this phrase, potential for job creation, do you wanna add local to it?
I would just, I, I toss that out as an idea, because I've seen that done.
Right.
Obviously, this isn't gonna be a lot, I mean, retail, what are you looking at, two, three employees? I mean, maybe, what, up to ten, I, I just.
Maybe.
Something like that.
Oh, yeah, I, um.
In your experience in frequenting these places, Sheila, what are you?
Right. I think I'm thinking, I wonder if somebody would be inclined off the cuff to hire someone with experience? And most likely, that person would not necessarily come from within the radius of whatever we're gonna set for the radius, because, you know, again, to your point about local, local, local. So I, is that considered comparative, is it appropriate to ask a company that's applying to essentially agree to put in the time to do training for a local employee?
We could, we could put in like a local hiring plan.
Yeah.
I mean.
A commit- what we've seen state standard-wise, in terms of these, is a commitment to hiring local. So, a preference in local applicants first, is, uh, yeah, preference to local applicants in their hiring process, is what it's been worded as.
Has been seen as a.
Something that most municipalities have put into their HCAs.
Okay. Um, just a procedural question, when you talk about the anonymity of review of the comparative criteria, how will the applicant recognize that within the request? So for example, quality of business plan, proposed development timeline, that nothing is divulged within those descriptions, that would.
They're gonna, s- at a first pass, you'd have to be redacted.
Exactly.
You're gonna redact, okay.
Yeah, or it would have to go through and redact everything.
Okay.
Um, the, just to give, so I spoke about the federal issue, I, we went through the criteria, that's the last thing I said I was gonna talk about was a little bit, just on the overview of the process. Um, and without getting in too much of the weeds, because that's mainly gonna be what we're talking about at the December second meeting, is, we'll have an RFI ready for, we'll send it out when it's done, that way the board can have a view of it before the meeting. Um, but what we'll be looking for at that point is review from the board, a vote to release. Um, we'll do thirty days, but depending on where the holidays fall, it could ex- bleed a little over thirty days, just to give people ample time, because it's a busy time of year anyway. Um, we'll probably take thirty days to review, um, and then award from there. When the deadline comes for submissions, in an open meeting, that's posted, whether it's before the board, or it's a meeting that we post special to opening of, or, or, opening of proposals that we receive. All that can be said at those meetings is, the Mike Nicholson shop submitted a proposal that's written down by me as chief procurement officer, and then signed by two witnesses that it was received on this date, or by that date. Then I'll go through and open the next proposal and say, the Jim Nicholson shop submitted one, and I'll write Jim Nicholson shop, and then it's signed by two witnesses that it was submitted. That way, there's a record of what was submitted, uh, or who submitted, and it was in by the deadline. That's the only part that then is public until the award is made. Everything after that is actually done behind closed doors, if it was done by a public board, it would have to be an executive session, but where this is a working group of department heads, it's done in a private meeting of the department heads.
Okay.
Just coffee?
Just coffee. That's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Standard process.
Are there any questions?
Process, any questions about content, any comments, anything at all?
I mentioned it at the, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, it seems like the inducement, community commitment, um, kind of runs at odds with the, with the entire uh, process of trying to establish business.
Yeah.
Basically, I agree with what, what Mitch says, and I'm sorry, I can't read your, uh, last name. But it, it, it does seem to be, uh, a situation where, uh, if benefits are offered, it would be very difficult for the community to refuse a substantial benefit from, uh, one person in favor of something that another person does not have the capability of. And also, uh, and again, I can't read your last name, but, uh, I heard reference to, when Sheila, uh, said that, well, uh, this is not like alcohol, it's a new, um, business, and that the town voted against it, uh, although narrowly. But, that was what, how many years ago?
Almost three.
Okay. There's probably been a significant change in public opinion, as there has been on a lot of social issues, and in fact, it may be the other way now. And so, I don't think that, uh, the fact that, uh, on both these two issues, that, that, uh, community inducement, and also the fact that we should establish more stringent rules for this type of activity, and this type of establishment, uh, should be based on the fact that it was voted down, because, you know, the current situation may be different, and, uh, the opposite of that. That's my comment.
Thank you, I think that's a good point, I think, uh, probably one of the reasons I brought it up is because our neighboring communities all, uh, regardless of what happened at the ballot for question four, they then went the next step to then say, they don't want any, any licenses at all. Whereas Rutland, to your point, actually did go in the other direction, to say, you know what, it passed at the state level, uh, Rutland's gonna go ahead, and, you know, obviously came up with some structure as far as how many we would have, so I, I absolutely see your point there, yeah.
So, if I may, I guess, I was hoping that we would have a little bit more public input, because I've heard a few, I've kind of heard the extremes, like, I'm not really in favor of this. If it's coming to town, then let's make money on it, and then, the town needs money, and then I've heard the opposite of, let's make this a s- like, a community program, which is kind of the way the CCC is pushing things, so I was really hoping to have more.
Really?
No, 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 I know.
They say that's how they're pushing things, they're not really pushing things like that.
But, the, the financial incentives, inducements, whatever, terrible word, are, so I just wanna put it out there that I was really hoping to have more feedback from the public in that context.
To Leah's point, and then I will get to Mr. Sherman, I wonder if it's appropriate to do a survey monkey out, since we really didn't get a lot of people at this public information session.
The, I will say too, we did have this in the paper, no, we didn't have it in the paper, we sent an email blast out, and we put it on the website and stuff, so we could do some more outreach there, but.
Mr. Sherman.
Stephen Sherman, Pata Road. Are we actually locked in to bringing this industry into town?
Uh, yes, according to the will of the voters, yes.
According to what?
The will of the voters, yes.
And that was three years ago.
That was last special town meeting.
Right, a year ago. We've been referencing two different things, when it came up with question four on the statewide ballot was twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and then more recently, we took multiple actions where we had a temporary moratorium while we, while we were coming up with the rules, and then ultimately, those rules passed and allow for that, this one single license.
Out of curiosity, why do we do this special and not annual, we'd have greater voter participation?
Uh, let me think about that, what was the timeline, do you remember?
It had to be decided by the end of the year or something, but I don't know why it wasn't done in the spring.
We had restrictions on the, Peter's gonna come in and tell us, uh, we had restrictions in the moratorium on how long we could keep it. We had the ability to extend the moratorium if we wanted to, but it was being frowned upon to extend it, they wanted us to take action, because they had some communities that were using the moratorium as a way to kick the can down the road, and just kind of not make a decision. Um, and then we had a working group that was working on the bylaw, um, aggressively, and that was actually while our interim was here, because I remember how much back and forth there was, um, in anticipation of the special, and it ended up being what we thought was going to be the primary focus of the special town meeting, and actually, I don't think it ended up being that, it was a very.
Well, I mean, you had about twenty people that were interested in it, that showed up and all voted for it at the special, and as you know how small the special town meetings are, it just seems like.
Yeah, that one was a little better attended, I'd have to look up the numbers again, back in eighteen, yeah.
There's no way of really bringing this back up again.
It'd be a very long process.
Yeah, yeah, long.
Just, for, on a strict process way to go, um, it's a zoning bylaw, so it has an incubation period that it can't be touched within, Peter, three years. So we can't vote to change the bylaw that the town passed last year for three years, and from its approval date at town meeting, because it's a zoning bylaw, not approval by the attorney general's office.
I mean, isn't this all kind of a gray area though, because it's still federally illegal, so I mean, we passed a zoning bylaw that's in contrary with.
But it's still past state law, which is the, I get what you're saying, it's federally illegal, but.
Pass a law that saying breaking and entering is legal in the state, but it doesn't mean that it, it is, right?
No, I, yeah, I, it's true, but, so, the, the zoning.
It's really reaching.
Getting, getting above our six hundred dollar pay grade here.
As we, we go.
But, again, just to explain the full process, in that hypothetical that was brought up by Mr. Sherman, is we'd have to wait three years to vote to rescind the bylaw, and then there'd have to be another question at a ballot, at an election, to say, we don't want marijuana here, that's the way the state does it.
I'm just thinking, is it all, is it really all worth it, all the aggravation? How long, you've been sitting here for two hours now, this is just a start.
I mean, I think this gets back to the fact that it's a new industry, and so the process is, is complex, we don't have these questions when it comes to liquor licenses. I mean, there's probably plenty of questions to be asked relative to the state. the state and the liquor license distribution process, but ultimately, nobody blinks or, or really bats an eye when you drive by yet another package store, right? It's just part of the landscape, and we're not there with this.
On that too, there are certain state regulations that are more stringent than what we have here, for, so for instance, state regulations say that the windows of a facility have to be the ones you can see out, but not in, because if they are doing medical, there's.
Privacy concerns.
Issue there. So there are more stringent, and that was just an example, but there are other state regulations for these types of businesses that we didn't include, just because again, they're covered in the state stuff.
Okay.
There are some new regulations being looked at by the CCC in terms of home delivery programs, drive-throughs, and things of that nature that could potentially come down the line with these industries.
Drive-throughs, really? Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, drive-throughs is currently there, as well as, for lack of any better term, a pot grub hub, where you can, again.
Really? There's no better term?
I mean, there's plenty other, that's just the first thing that came to my mind.
In most southern states, they have drive-through liquor stores, so there's not, without precedent.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it's, so you could call someone up and basically have it, your product delivered to your house is the other. That just was the first thing that came to my head, but anyway. Yeah, just a bit, just a bit.
Okay.
So again, there, there's new stuff coming down the pike that is just, shows that the full industry is just new for anyone.
Yeah.
So Mr. Sherman, I looked it up to your question, it was almost exactly a year ago. It was November nineteenth, twenty eighteen. And to Mitch's question, I thought the meeting was better attended, but the, the approval, the article passed sixty-six yes to eighteen no. We had been operating for about a year with the moratorium, which actually gets back to why our, our dates were set up the way they were relative to having to act. Yes, Peter?
I, I just wanted to point out that that was after the town meeting had an opportunity to vote on a complete banning.
Yes, which failed.
So, that got defeated by the town, so it is the town's will to have the business here.
Yep. They also voted to approve the three percent max tax, which they could have gone with anything, but they approved the three percent.
Then I will say something that some people get confused on too. There's a three percent sales tax on product. There's also per state statute, an op, a up to three percent local option fee that municipalities have on top of everything that we've listed here in the RFP.
And that doesn't even get into the inducements.
And, and the money that the state's gonna make off this.
Can we all agree that the word inducement should not be in our RFP?
Yes, yes.
I would like that, that'd be great. So.
I have one more question.
Yes.
What was that vote again?
So for the zoning bylaw, it was sixty-six to eighteen. Now, the, the article to prohibit all marijuana sales that Peter just referenced failed. Sixty-seven of voting against the prohibition and twenty-two in favor. So essentially, the same people that tried, that voted for full prohibition, then voted against the bylaws contents.
Okay, so my next question is, how many registered voters are in town?
Oh, what's that number? Is it six thousand? I think it's around six thousand total registered.
That's a shame.
But.
No, that seems high.
You have a posted town meeting. In my personal opinion, whether it's the annual town meeting or a special in the fall, it's a posted town meeting.
I get.
If people wanna vote, they're welcome. I don't, I don't see a difference between either meeting, in my personal.
But that's a shame.
It is, of course, it is.
Yeah.
All right.
Stuck with it.
I think we're.
Anything else? Anyone? Peter?
Fast question.
Yeah?
Why is the Board of Health not included in the reviewers of the solid waste disposal and trash pickup?
Oh, Rich is on the committee, I was just throwing out examples.
Okay, you didn't mention Board of Health in the, in the list of authorities.
Yeah, Rich Stevens, our health agent, is on the committee. I was just throwing out examples of how, of we, there's certain things that are specific to departments. And then the last thing that's at the end is a list of references so that we can call for the RFP procedures that are outlined in the state. And that's the absolute last step before awarding.
Peter?
References?
Yeah.
You don't need to cringe, it's not that bad. I'm just trying to, it's been too long since I've been involved in the regulations, and so I don't remember the exact process. Is it post-agreement before you can get the license?
Yes.
But the license is also a requirement before you can get the special permit?
Yes.
So I, I, it feels, for all the information that's getting thrown about, it's a long way to go before you can find out if you can have, have the business. That's my only comment.
It is. The, the town, yeah, and the town is the gateway to the CCC, and I mean, they've had a backlog for a little while, I think they might be caught up now, but.
There are a ton of licenses in process right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a really backlog.
It's insane.
Yeah. Yes.
When and where will there be this similar list of requirements for cultivators? And where do I go in town to, to find out about this?
I think you've given us, you know, fodder, such the wrong word, for, for a future meeting. It's not something that we've been discussing. All the energy has been on this.
We can certainly bring it up, so is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
And this is a, basically, at least that once was a farming community.
Yeah, and Senator Gobi in particular was a very strong advocate of, of trying to ensure that this was a crop that was considered agricultural, and I don't believe it is yet.
Yeah.
Everybody's, everybody's shaking their head.
Yeah, not yet. There is federal legislation that was filed to identify hemp as an agricultural product. Again, nothing's happened on that yet, either.
I think, but, we're beyond the scope.
We are, yeah.
But it's good to know that there is interest in the cultivation side, because I think some of this was that there's interest in the retail side, so we know that we need to make the cultivation side an equal priority.
Yep.
Uh, we appreciate that you all stayed with us until eight twenty-six, when this was supposed to start at six fifteen. We appreciate your interest and your questions a lot. Is there any other business to come before the board?
I just have one quick thing I meant to say in my update, just so the residents are aware. RRG has contacted my office about setting the tax rate hearing for December second, so that'll be.
Big meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Motion?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.